You see me?
Yes, you're just kind of dark in a shadow.
Oh, yeah, it's my crappy lighting.
That's okay.
Happy New Year, friends.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Hi, Daniel.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Just waiting for Jerry. I haven't seen anything from him.
Okay. Hey, Connie, did you want me to wait a few more minutes?
Yeah, let me email him and see. Thanks.
I'll try to text it, too.
Okay, go ahead and do that. He'll probably get that quicker.
Who knows? I'm not even sure this is a correct number for them anymore. I'll try.
We just wait till five after and if he doesn't answer either of us, we'll go ahead. We'll have a call.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds like the plan. Nothing.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Jeff, do you, or Cynthia usually? Jerry is not present.
Yeah, I'm gonna fill in, whatever works.
Okay.
All right, are we gonna get started then? Is that what's happening?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can go ahead and get started with the slides.
Okay, so, excuse me. 4:05, January 7, 2021, called to order our Bree District Commission meeting. Our next monthly business meeting will be at noon on Thursday, January 21, 2021. Next commission hearing will be at 4:00 PM on Thursday, February 4, 2021. Should we swear in the staff?
Can you come where?
Good gosh, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Do I swear, do I swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Connie Torbeck, Assistant Historic Preservation Officer.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have everyone present today but for Jerry Simmons and who else? Connie, who are present today?
Maybe just I'll say your name for the record.
Daniel Mather.
Bill Hugus.
Cynthia, we can't hear you.
All right, we're not hearing Cynthia, but anyway, Jeff Pongonas. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our December 3, 2020 meeting? Has everyone had a chance to review those?
So moved to enter those into the record?
I will second.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We need to, oh, sorry, Jeff, we need to call the roll.
Yep.
Oh, you're right, thank you.
So, Bill Hugus?
Aye.
Daniel Mather?
Aye.
Jeff Pongonas?
Aye.
Cynthia Hunt, maybe you can raise your hand for aye? Thank you. Cynthia, raise her thumb up for aye.
Okay. Do we have staff approvals to approve today, Connie?
Yes, beginning on page two.
Okay, I'm assuming that everyone's had a chance to review those. It looks like there are two on the agenda, 001 and 002. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Bill Hugus.
Second.
Daniel Mather will second.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Bill Hugus?
Aye.
Daniel Mather?
Aye.
Jeff Pongonas?
Aye.
Cynthia Hunt? Oh, yes, thank you.
Great, motion passes, thank you. Okay, our first application is BD 210103.
This applicant has requested to be continued to the February meeting.
Okay, move on to 004.
Oh, could we have a motion for that, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Connie. Do I have a motion for that, please?
So moved, Hugus.
Daniel Mather will second.
Thank you.
Okay, call roll, Bill Hugus?
Aye.
Daniel Mather?
Aye.
Jeff Pongonas?
Aye.
Cynthia Hunt?
Aye.
Yay!
Cynthia jumped in right as we got through 15 minutes of nothing but administrative procedure. Thanks for coming. Okay, how about 895 South High Street? Do we have some representatives for this submittal application?
Yes, we have the owner, property owners, I believe, and the architect.
Great, so should I swear you in?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony or plaintiff is the truth? If so, say aye.
Aye.
I do.
And please say your names and your--
Lynn Nichols.
You the only one speaking?
And my husband.
Rob Barrett, aye.
Okay.
Good evening.
Steve, are you speaking? You're muted.
Steve Hurt with Urban Order Architecture.
Thanks, Steve, we've got you now. Do you all want to tell us a little bit about your project?
Oh, staff report comes first.
Staff report comes first.
And I have to have it up on the screen because my printer wouldn't work today. Okay. So this is a request to retain the existing Sherwin-Williams Tricor Black paint on all wood trim, and a request to retain the existing Sherwin-Williams Tricor Black paint on the stone window and door sills and lintels, the stone water table, and on a portion of the brick wall at the front entrance. Exterior painting was previously approved in March 2020, as well as exterior modifications and new windows. Exterior painting has been completed, including the previously painted stone sills and lintels and a portion of the previously painted brick under the front porch, which were brown. It is not known when the stone and brick were previously painted, at least before 2009, which was the earliest Google view I saw. There's no record of any previous approval for painting of the stone and brick in our file. While black would not be a typical color historically used on an Italianate building, paint colors for wood trim is generally left to the taste of the property owner by our staff as we staff approve painting, as it is easily changeable. Upon receipt of paint color chips for staff approval, HPO staff consistently requires that any previously painted stone, brick, or concrete be painted to match the natural, unpainted color of the stone, brick, or concrete as closely as possible. Staffs would recommend approval of the request to retain the existing Sherwin-Williams Tricor Black paint on all wood trim, and recommend denial of requests to retain the existing Sherwin-Williams Tricor Black paint on the stone window door, window and door sills and lintels, stone water table, and on a portion of brick wall at the front entrance. If applicant agrees to modifying the application, recommend that the stone window and door sills and lintels, stone water table, and a portion of brick wall at the front entrance be painted to match the natural, unpainted color of the stone, brick, or concrete as closely as possible, generally based on the Bree District guidelines for painting. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Okay, why don't we hear from the applicant about what they would like to discuss and the sort of order of events here and how we got here?
So, as Connie said, we came in with this project to get approval for some exterior alterations, including new windows, an ADA ramp on the back, and some modifications to some existing sort of strange window openings to put them more in character to sort of the Italianate style of this house. All of the modifications are on infill portions on the back of the building or on the rear side. And at that time, we did get approval for paint and didn't really occur to me that, well, so we got approval for paint and then when when we didn't submit the colors, and I believe that the way this happened is the painter came out and was painting all of the trim, and all of the existing stone was already painted, so it got painted along with the trim. And I think that's just how it happened. So, everything was painted brown, which I assume was probably maybe late 80s or so. And our client is just making improvements and doing a lot of work to put this building back together. It's sort of been neglected for a period of time. And they actually looked around the neighborhood and saw some other examples of houses that are painted in the exact same manner. And I think that is where this all started. So I guess I can, we can have the owners address that. But for now, we would just like to be able to keep what we've already got and I guess put it out there for discussion.
Steve, if I could, before we move on, Connie, can you click up to page two in this proposal? I think part of the context here, you're gonna have to zoom in. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve or Lynn, but the part of the conversation here is that the areas that we're talking about were already painted brown, right? That's the issue?
They were painted brown, but they were chipping and the paint was in very poor condition.
Yeah, if you push, scroll up just a little bit, Connie, you can see the paint deteriorate. I'm sorry, scroll down. The paint is sort of deteriorating. You can see it a little bit more. Right? It even looks like the sills are a different color. Anyway, so Connie, this is why I understand your recommendation. Had it come in like this, what would they have, what would you have suggested?
So, this was done, you know, without approval at some point, the painting of the brown.
Yeah.
Maybe before district or maybe in the 80s and it wasn't caught. And if there are other ones that are painted black, those are code violations and we can follow up on those because it wouldn't have been approved. I mean, it's just our general spec when we put it in to any COA that any, any, any non, any masonry not painted, like that foundation there, is not to be painted. And any previously painted masonry like brick, stone, or concrete is to to match the natural stone or masonry color as closely as possible.
Right, so you're suggesting that would--
That's for all commission areas.
That would be like a buff sand color to mimic the natural color of the stone as closely as possible. And how about the brick wall that's painted?
That we would suggest, too, to be, you know, it's a little bit more difficult because you, you're not gonna put-- But I have seen it, paint, you know, brick painted, that was previously painted, just a color similar to the brick and it does blend in much more, much more better--
Yeah.
Part of the proper English there, than, than a different color, even if it doesn't have the mortar joints.
Right.
The house to the north that you can see in this photo has a painted brick under the porch.
Right, and if that came, if that, when that comes to us to be, you know, I'm sure that was done also at some point without approval. And when that comes to us for painting, that's what they will be told to do, is to repaint those. Either leave it as it is and not paint it, or else, if they're going to paint it, to paint it to match the natural color.
Connie, is there an exception to the bases of the columns on the porch? Would those want to remain black as opposed to being painted buff to match the stone?
There's not really. I just, you know, it's, the reason I kind of didn't even bring that up too much, and I talked to Steve about it a little bit, was because I don't think that's original, you know? It didn't matter to me that much. It's not that big of a deal. But yeah, I mean, it really should be painted sort of a gray color to, to match concrete.
And if we want to talk specifically about that, I think we want to make that rusticated concrete block go away as much as possible. So I would like to keep that black, if that's, you know, part of the discussion. I personally think that's fine.
Okay, are we allowed to speak at this point?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I just want to first apologize in advance for not getting the proper approval. Steve was being very gracious. This was, this was, this was our error, to not get the proper approval. So, I do, we do want to apologize for that. I also want to say that everything that was painted, we didn't, we painted things that were already painted, the brown color. I purchased this building for my nonprofit organization back in 2016. And so I made no modifications to the outside of the building until now. We have spent a considerable amount of money refurbishing this building and it took me 15 years to save the money to embark upon a project of this size. The reason why the color black was chosen is because we did see other buildings in this area that have that same color and we felt that it was within the time period of the late 1800s, early 1900s. However, I, again, I would not have even thought that that would not have been approved. But we are at this point, our objective here is to see if we can get the approval for what has already happened. We feel that we have improved the appearance of that building tremendously. When you look at our building and our neighbor's building, we do have photographs of that, if you'd like to see that. It's, there's a stark difference. And that's about personal preference, I'm sure, but the inside as well, we have, again, made this building absolutely beautiful. And so we are at this point requesting that, even though we did not get prior approval, that we will reconsider and approve the color that we have spent a lot of money in painting.
Currently, we have a little over $300,000 invested in the renovation. And the painting of the outside was $10,500. So it's going to set us back another $10,500 to paint it. I have a picture of the building almost next to us that I would like to present, if that would be possible.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. Connie, is that okay?
Yeah, if you, you can share.
Okay, let me figure out where sharing is and where--
It should be at the bottom of your screen, I suspect.
Okay.
I pass the sharing to you, so you have the little ball next to your name now. This is Sarah with the city. So if you go to the bottom of your screen, there should be a button that says "Start Sharing", right next to where your "Start Video" and "Mute" are.
Yeah, mine's not enabled.
Do you, do you know what the address is? Sarah could maybe find it on Google.
Sure, yeah, the address is 1071 South High.
Okay, give me just a sec.
But again, what that probably is going to result in is a code violation for 1071--
Understand. Completely understand, Connie, and we know this was our fault. I just would like you to see the building that we saw that gave us the idea to do black.
Right, right.
And, you know, at, at some point, when this paint wears out, we certainly understand that we would repaint and do another color. We're just, we're, in this time with COVID and being a small nonprofit business, we've already spent more than we had budgeted to improve the property. And, and the $10,500 right now is going to be a bit of a burden. Even, and we do realize this was our fault and we are very sorry for that. But there is the building that we saw and we said, wow, that looks really neat, let's do black. So it just never, it's just like, duh, we should have thought to talk to you guys. But there's that one and then there's, there's another one that's very similar. We won't go into it and show you. But that, this building specifically, just down the street from us, was the building that we saw that gave us the idea.
So my concern would be just in, you know, precedent for the commission. And if the commission might consider a motion that would say it, you know, it needs to be repainted within, say, a year, and then if that's not possible for you to do, revisit that in a year and see where you are then, or something like that, you know, but I, you know. It's up to the commission to make the motion, but I would just be concerned about--
Okay, so, Connie, could I suggest we put the images back up on the screen and then maybe we could do a little round robin here and get some input from the other commissioners. And I, and I think one of the things that I'd ask everyone to think about is to be specific. If we're gonna ask for things to be repainted or not, not be repainted, what, what would those be? I know in our business meeting, we were a little concerned. Maybe, Connie, you can click through. There were some kind of funny, sorry--
Sarah.
Kind of kestoning or, or, on the, on the foundation blocks, I'm not sure, yeah. There's sort of some interesting--
The lintels over the basement windows.
Thank you.
Yeah. Could, could I ask if we could, it seems like it might be an easy thing to get the approval for the wood trim to be painted black?
Connie, I believe that was your recommendation or in your staff report, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
We'd be willing to have that sand blasted, right? We, we didn't notice the.
Well, you can't, you.
Basement lintels. Um, we would be willing to sandblast that off certainly.
You can't sandblast. Sandblast damages stone.
And it would be easier to paint that into the foundation.
That is the staff recommendation to paint that masonry on the foundation.
Yeah, that actually wasn't approved by us. So I think our painters took some liberties there. Uh, so I apologize. That wasn't, that certainly wasn't something we had, um, agreed upon, so.
I think the issue of, uh, paint on the wood trim and black is not an issue for this commissioner. It's the, it's the severity of all this black stonework that makes it quite severe appearance and really obliterates the architectural features of the building. Um, I understand why you got here and how you got here. I would be in favor of it, at least giving you a timeline to get the stone repainted. I understand the COVID problems and, and the economics of today, so. Uh, but, ah, boy, um, more than a year to me. I, I, all this does is promote other people to do what's happened here. And of course, the building to the north of you is obviously not approved. Um, and the building you, uh, alluded to also has, normally anytime storm windows are put on, they are to match the trim color of the window, not white. And, um, you don't have that case here, but there are some other issues that other building even, uh, at this point. I don't know how about, how Dan feels about it or Cynthia.
I think that the smartest plan is to provide some sort of timeline to paint the masonry and what's painted on the wood trim can remain.
Yeah, right. I, I would agree with that. Now, what that timeline is appropriate, I don't know. I mean.
Is a, is a year agreeable to the owner?
I would request too, only from the standpoint that we went $100,000 over budget from the original, um, planned, uh, and so we're still paying that off. Um, uh, so, and, and what, and as far as what color would, um, would be recommended to, because the, my other concern here is that I would want, you know, now we have part of it black. And so now we have to make the color match, not just the brick, but also the black. And so I'm just wondering what colors would be approved for something like that?
Stone color could be reviewed by staff. They're certainly qualified to make a judgment on the stone color itself.
And in fact, I would say must be reviewed by staff.
Well, that's even better. In terms of the brick.
Worry about matching, right?
In terms of the brick porch portion, uh, there are some colors, I know of a Sherwin-Williams for sure, that will come fairly close to the brick color. Um, I would agree with, uh, Steve that the base of that porch column that's been altered probably should be left alone and stay black at this point. It is obviously an alteration. Probably was a rotten column base. If somebody had the bright idea of adding the, the plinthas, plinths to it, so.
Bill, could you help me understand, um, around the windows, um, around the doorways, what would be repainted? I think I know, but I'm, I'd just like you to clarify it for me.
Yeah, uh, just the stone lintels and the stone sills on the windows.
So the, 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 is the decorative piece above the window, is that all stone?
Yes, well.
It's probably wood meant to look like stone.
Stone or made to mimic stone. Back then, some of this, um, roof bracket.
Yeah.
Is metal.
Right.
Uh, was originally painted to match stone.
So just a- again for me, Bill, um, we can just stay on this image. Around the window where Connie's mouse is right now, what is going to be repainted exactly?
Um, the little support blocks below the stone lintel.
Uh huh.
The fancy stone lintel itself, and then the stone sill and its two support blocks.
Okay, so it's, we are asking for them to repaint wood and stone?
Not wood, no.
No.
The, 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 the things above the windows, those are wood. Those are not stone.
Okay, and they don't need to be repainted. Okay, got it. I'm just trying to understand exactly what you want painted.
Well, historically, those things above the windows were painted in off, uh, a, a different color than the trim color.
Got it.
And normally they were stone color.
Okay.
They were made to mimic the stone. It was a, a poor man's detail of a, of a, an expensive detail, so.
It was a working man's detail, Bill. This was a, this was a working man's neighborhood.
So, so when you are requesting that we, that we repaint the decorative, um, piece above the window, I, I believe that is wood, not, um, not concrete, so.
I would be surprised if it's wood.
Yes. The point is they wanted it to look like stone, so the colors in historically are the stone colors.
Okay.
Steve, do you know if the window surrounds, uh, the lintel is wood or stone?
I had always assumed that it was stone. But I haven't, I didn't even think to think about it until Bill brought this up.
Yeah.
Well, if they were wood, they're applied to the brick. And if they're stone, they're integral in the brick coursing. I've never, I've never encountered, uh, a header like that in wood in this area of Columbus. Now, all, all the brackets, the Italianate brackets and that horizontal band could very well be wood and/or metal or stone. But I, I've mostly experienced wood or metal on those brackets themselves.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so, so just so we're clear, you are actually asking that we repaint like the entire window?
Not the window.
Not, not, not the window.
Above and below.
Other than the actual window, the window inset, we're painting everything else around it, correct?
It does, what he mentioned, the lintels and the sill below.
Yeah.
So hopefully repainting isn't the full 10,500 or whatever you paid.
Exactly.
Less than that because you're not picking everything.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
In, in terms of the brackets, I don't have a feeling on whether they could stay black, the roof brackets. What do the other commissioners feel?
I believe that if I can weigh in, I believe that the roof brackets are part of the composite of this, of the, uh, soffit and box cutter.
So you would see them as black?
Yes.
I, I think that's a, probably a pretty good interpretation as well. Um.
And what about that band that connects the brackets?
I would say stay, if, if brackets stay black, that the band stays black. But all the window and door headers and sills should go to a stone color eventually.
Okay.
What about the band, what about the band around the foundation, Jill?
That definitely needs to be stone. That's a water table and it's, it's probably Ohio limestone.
Yeah.
Which is denser than, than a lot of the stones, so. It should be easier to remove.
Yeah, I could live with that compromise.
Yeah, I agree. Do we, it, um, are there any other components of the house that need to be discussed in terms of paint or no paint?
The headers, or headers in the basement, on the basement windows, Jeff.
Yeah.
I think we all agree that those should be repainted, correct?
Stone.
Yes.
Yes.
The header in the basement windows?
Yeah.
Can you, can, is there a picture of those that you could?
That image, please.
Right there.
There's a, there's an enlargement somewhere.
I see it. I see it. Okay, thank you.
There, some of the basement windows are boarded up, so.
And those could stay black.
Great.
Obviously, the glass block is something we don't approve, so somebody's done something there that's not code compliant. And you see a lot of it around here, unfortunately.
I think that that was, that was a previous.
Yeah.
Improvement from someone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so in this image, we're suggesting that the, the, um, the water table, any stone beneath the water table should be repainted to match the stone. Color of the stone, excuse me.
Yeah.
And you guys are suggesting that a black boarded up window is okay? It shouldn't be that same color. It sure seems like it'd be a freckle to me.
It is, it would be a freckle. It'd be nicer if you paint the whole thing a stone color to make it go away.
Yeah.
In that opinion, when you're looking at a, at a window, it is often dark. So.
Yeah.
I think it reads as a, 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 a masonry opening.
Right.
Yes, I agree with that.
I mean, I could live with that.
I don't care so much about that because it's not the original building, um, whatever works for you guys.
Okay. Any other components on this building that we need to discuss when I turn to Bill or Daniel to make a motion?
We'll let Daniel do that one.
Okay, well, I don't think there's any other components of the building, but.
Do you have any issues with two years versus one year?
I think considering the amount that we have directed that needs to be painted, which in my opinion was more than I thought, I think two years is only fair.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to request that the applicant come back after one year to tell us their plan so we make sure it doesn't get forgotten. And I would like the applicant to confer with staff on all paint colors before they paint the house, any, any of the trim.
Okay, Daniel.
We could renew it if they're still not financially able to handle it.
That's right.
That actually would be, that actually would be my preference.
Okay.
So now I have to recite that as the motion.
Yeah.
I have one, I have one other question.
All right.
Would the commission be open to a non-brick color on the porch? Just thinking of examples of painted brick that is not always painted a brick color? Like a.
What are you recommending?
Even going with the stone color under there or something lighter? If we're, if we're doing this, it seems like we should brighten that up.
Yeah, I don't have an opinion. I, I, my sense would be let's not add another color to the palette. But I, to me, painted brick is a, I never really liked painted brick that's made to look like the color of brick. But I'm speaking not from a point of architectural history here, so.
Steve, I'd almost have to see a sample color on the brick first.
Okay.
I agree with Jeff. Sometimes when you try to match the brick color because of the joints or actually, uh, changing the way you view it, it will never, even if the color's spot on, it will never look the same.
Right.
So.
How many colors we have.
A light gray would be okay, but I'd have to see it up, like a sample painted on the brick.
Hey, I personally think the, I, I appreciate the idea, but I think it would be strange when it hits the corner, uh, in the left on this photo.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
I am, I am more inclined to do the brick color.
Okay, I just wanted to see if we had any.
I'm open to Bill's, I'm open to Bill's idea if you want to bring something to us, to look at.
Okay, and I haven't talked to, to our clients yet, so.
So are we.
If you need one of us commissioners to come out to the job and look at the brick color you're proposing, a sample on the job, we'd be glad to do it. At some point.
Okay, that's good, good feedback. Thank you, Steve, for that question. Daniel, can you, uh, summarize our discussion?
Sure. Uh, all masonry that is currently painted black is to be painted to match a natural stone color within two years.
No, 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 Daniel. Plus, all other composite or other materials that was originally intended to be stone or look like stone needs to be included as well. Which is the lintels, which is the stuff above and below the windows.
Great.
Sorry.
No, that was good. Um, and then at the one-year mark, we're asking that the owners come back and update us with their plan?
Well, we'd love to have them finish it within one year, but we're willing to take a plan at the end of one year.
So are we asking, we asking for one year with the caveat that they can come back and renew for two?
I think.
Well, typically any approval is good for one year. So if in a year they need to, we need to reapprove it because they can't get it done, then that's fair enough.
And we've indicated willingness.
Okay. The motion is that we are asking that the owners, uh, that they paint the masonry and all other aspects of the building that are intended to look like masonry, uh, a natural, something to match a natural stone color within one year with a possible caveat that they can come back in a year and extend it for another year.
And the brick be painted a brick color to be reviewed by staff.
And all colors to be approved by staff.
We learned that lesson, parts.
Yeah, got it.
So, can I ask a question? Was the brown that was on the building, was that approved?
No.
So that's been like that for 27 years and not approved?
It, it, brown in that era was popular in the seventies and late sixties. So it could be before commission was formed even.
So if, if buildings were like after the commission was formed, which was what year was the commission formed?
It was in the late eighties. Is that right, Connie?
I.
The win, because I wasn't here.
Yeah, it, it, it was in that era, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is just moving forward in other buildings, like, so if they, if they don't follow the, if they don't get preapproval, then everyone goes through this process of, so I guess my question is how did that building last that long? Cleaning?
They're grandfathered in. There's, we're, if it was done, you know, proceed, if the work proceeds, you know, governance or commission or whatnot, it's, it, it's sort of, you know, is grandfathered in.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if, but if they, if they make the change now and use, and don't follow the procedures, then they're subject to a code violation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, so.
And if it's done like within a, a year ago or something and it's reported, uh, if code, if code enforcement can look back on, um, Google Street View or something and see that it's been, it's been changed within a year, they can still contact the owner and write them up with that.
So after a year then, what happens if it's not, if it's not caught?
Well, if you re-review it with us, we can reapprove it for one more year. But if, if it gets ignored, it may get turned in as a code violation again.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm talking about, um, the other, yeah, I'm talking about other people.
Sometimes it does. Sometimes people get away with it, you know?
Okay.
And that's, and, you know, in the brewery district, I think, uh, they, in the past, and it's changing now though, there were, there were, there were more businesses and there were fewer residents. And residents are often who, who does reporting. And also there may have been code officers who were covering their brew district who weren't, uh, who weren't really, uh, sort of patrolling that area as much as it gets done now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're we're midstream during a motion here. I think Daniel finished. Thank you, Daniel. Um, can I have a motion for approval, please?
I would like to move that we we go ahead with the motion, but I'd like to suggest one amendment. I think it'd be helpful if if Connie can add the components that we think should be included, just so we're clear. The stuff above the windows, stuff below the window, the water table. I have those listed. I have those listed. Yeah.
And I can.
She could do that. I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful, Steve.
I, beyond that, I would move to go ahead with the recommendation. Do you want me to read those off? As amended, if you want to. The headers on the basement windows, uh, lentils and sills on all other windows, the water table uh to be stone colored, uh, and the brick wall at the front porch to be a brick color approved by staff.
And lentils and sills on the doors.
Or also on the doors. That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
And also the brackets holding up the lentils and the sills, the little brackets. Right, right. I get that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Cynthia and Bill, thank you. Uh, fantastic.
I think but I think that was a second.
Yes.
Yeah, it was. He just, he was just being spicy.
Take your pick.
Okay, so I'm going to read the roll here. Uh, Jeff Pongonas.
Aye.
Daniel Mather.
Aye.
Cynthia Hunt.
Aye.
Bill Hugus.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved.
Motion passes. Thank you. By the way, I just want to say, on behalf of the Brewery District Commission, thanks for investing so much money in the building. We
Yeah.
we really appreciate you and we really do try to be, you know, customer centric as much as we can, so thanks for um coming back to us.
Thank you.
And our.
You see the transformation inside?
Yeah, the inside is.
Our hope and expectation is that this is not going to be ten five because it's much less than you originally took within that scope.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
So we'll get estimates.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda as I stumble through here. Bill, discussion? No, okay. Uh, any other business to discuss? Anything I don't know about, Connie?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, no, neither do I, but Happy New Year. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second. Okay, I'll just do it one more time. Cynthia?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Okay, and thank you, Sarah, who was actually sharing. I wasn't sharing.
Oh.
Oh, thank you, Sarah. Thanks for uh watching me stumble through this uh agenda. You caught me off off guard here.
You're welcome. Good job. It's okay.
And thank you, Nolan.
It's not a problem.
Happy twenty twenty-one.
It's gotta be better, although yesterday wasn't much of a good.
A zoom yesterday, yeah?
Yeah, we'll see you in a few weeks. Consider yesterday the low point. We're gonna consider yesterday the low point.
Yeah.
It's gonna go up.
That's how we should end. Thank.